Well, good afternoon, or good evening, somewhere in between. Welcome to University City High School. I am the principal of University City, proud Centurion, so welcome to our home. One of the things we do customarily around here, and our parents know this, so hopefully there's a few of you in here, and I know you have your different allegiance, but what we usually do is clap it up, so clap it up! Alright, we're gonna really stretch you on this one. I know we have some opposition schools here, but we're all one team. So, what I want you to do, I'm gonna say "you see," and then you say "you know." Right, you just can't say "you know," alright? It doesn't work that way. So I'm gonna say "you see," and then you... Yes, go like this. "You know." So, go ahead and practice with yourself for a sec. Alright, here we go. Live deal. "You see?"
"You know."
That's pretty good. Nicely done. Well, we are excited to have you. I know there's been a lot of preparation and excitement around the state of the district. Certainly, it is a challenging time, but yet an exciting time at the same moment. I'd like to introduce our ASB president, Marcus Darlene, to do the pledge of allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see for the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Ready, go. Left. Forward, arms. Forward. Thank you, may be seated. Before I turn this over, I have to have a self-correction here. I called our ASB president, Marcus Darlene. I guess he is? But his real last name is Deering, so sorry about that, Marcus. It's okay to self-correct. Now, also, onstage, you might have sawed our far left was the Mira Mesa High School Madrigals, which I have some familiarity with, but we are under the direction of Laura Williams. At this time, I'd like to recognize and bring up to the podium my superintendent and your
Good evening, everyone. It's certainly a pleasure for us to be here tonight. I want to welcome you to the 2012 State of the District address. Clearly, the UC High School Marine Corps JROTC unit skillfully presented the colors to us, and they were accompanied by the Mira Mesa Madrigal Singers, providing a wonderful rendition of our National Anthem, and I think that's great high school collaboration partnership, as Jeff knows firsthand, having led both of those schools at one time or another. Certainly, let's give them a round of applause for what we just saw. We are here tonight to celebrate and to reflect. Now, this evening, we want to celebrate all the great things that are happening in our district throughout where our schools are and the positive progress that they are making as we're preparing all students for successful futures. We're also here to reflect, reflect on the challenges we must face, together to maintain quality education programs in all of our schools throughout the entire district. I want to acknowledge our Board of Education for holding to the important public event of this kind for transparency, for bringing forward the message, for allowing us all to engage. I want to thank them and all of you in the community and all of those that support us throughout the year and throughout this greater San Diego for what you do to support education for all of us and all of the students in the San Diego Unified School District. Tonight's gathering is a testimony to great collaboration. I have already noted that the ROTC unit and the Madrigals were top-notch. Recognition and appreciation are appropriate for several other individuals and teams as well. First, I want to personally thank Jeff Olivero, our principal, our host tonight, for what he has done, and for his teaching and support staff, and for his parents. All of them came together, I met a number of them before we came to tonight's official event, talked to them about what they did to help prepare and to collaborate with the central office. Folks, let's give all of those who helped to make this a round of applause. Next, I'd also like to send kudos to the San Diego High School Mariachi Band, directed by Seraphin Parades, for the outstanding entertainment during the reception. There's a pattern here, folks, three high schools. And certainly, we saw some other very talented student groups. These included the UC High School Polynesian Dance Club, the UC High School Dance Team, the UC High School Drum Line, and the ambassadors that were out there amongst all of us, the ASB and CSF kids. They all were here tonight to support us, to support the event. And finally, I have two more recognitions. I'd like to shout out to the district's food service catering department for the fine refreshments during the reception, to Gary Patel and his team, and to the communications department, to Bernie Reinderson, Linda Zince, and all that they've done to do the overall coordination of our agenda. So, after having recognized all those good people, let's move on. I'd like to welcome to the podium our board president, John Lee Evans, who will call to order this official meeting and continue tonight's festivities. John, over to you.
Thank you Superintendent Koba, and thank you all for being here tonight. Before we start with more festivities, I'd like to introduce my fellow board members and officially call this meeting to order. First of all, we have a board member, Kevin Beiser. Our board... Right here, thank you. Our board member, Richard Barrera. And your high man here, Vice President Scott Barnett. So officially call to order the October 2nd, 2012 meeting of the Board of Education to discuss the state of the district. Now, the theme tonight is about our Vision 2020 and the students who will graduate in the year 2020. Students for the class of 2020 are currently in the 5th grade, and here to perform for us tonight are several members of the class of 2020, and are also joined by a few members of the class of 2019 and 2021, 4th, 5th, and 6th graders from Whitman Elementary School. They're led by teacher Thomas Vatsek, and please welcome all the students from Whitman Elementary.
Land where my fathers had men of the pilgrims' side. From every mountain side, let freedom ring. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, forever waves of green. For purple mountains majesty, above the fruit and place. America, America, God shine His grace on me. And crown thy earth with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. I've been working on the railroad all the livelong days. I've been working on the railroad just to pass the time away. Hey, don't you hear the whistle blowing? Rise up so early in the morn? Don't you hear the gosses shouting? Dinah, blow your horn. Dinah, won't you blow? Dinah, won't you blow? Dinah, won't you blow your horn? Dinah, won't you blow? Dinah, won't you blow? Dinah, won't you blow your horn? Someone's in the kitchen with Dinah. Someone's in the kitchen, I know. Someone's in the kitchen with Dinah. Strumming on the old banjo and singing, "Viva la vida, oh, viva la vida." Strumming on the old banjo. Give me a home where the buffalo roam, where the deer and the antelope play. Where seldom is heard a discouraging word, and the skies are not cloudy all day. Home on the range, where the deer and the antelope play. Where seldom is heard a discouraging word, and the skies are not cloudy all day. Shoot, fly, don't bother me. Shoot, fly, don't bother me. Shoot, fly, don't bother me, for I belong to somebody. I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel like a morning star. I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel like a morning star. So, shoot, fly, don't bother me. Shoot, fly, don't bother me. Shoot, fly, don't bother me, for I belong to somebody. Moonlight's over the ocean. My body lies over the sea. My body lies over the ocean. Oh, bring back my body to me. Bring back, bring back, oh, bring back my body to me, to me. Bring back, bring back, oh, bring back my body to me. Hush, little baby, don't say a word. Mama's gonna buy you a mockingbird. It can whistle and it can sing. It can do most anything, anything, anything. Hush, little baby, don't say a word. Mama's gonna buy you a mockingbird. It can whistle and it can sing. It can do most anything, anything, anything. Do, dear, a female deer, ready to drop a ball in sight. Me, a neighbor, I call myself, far away to run. So, I need a hole in bread, love, I know to follow song. Dear, keep a jumpin' breath, that will bring us back to do. So, me, Red, do, dear, a female deer, ready to drop a ball in sight. Me, a neighbor, I call myself, far away to run. So, me, oh, love, love, I know to follow song. Dear, keep a jumpin' breath, that will bring us back to do. So, me, ma, so, la, ti, do, so, do. This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York Islands, from the redwood forests to the Gulf Stream waters, this land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is mine. From Maine to Montana, desert to the shore, we sing that this land is your land, this land is mine. Yes, it's made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is mine. From California to Montana, desert to the shore, we sing that this land is your land. Yes, it's made for you and me.
That was an outstanding job and a great way to start a celebration. Now, I just want to take a minute here. We have two or three members of the class of 2020. You guys should come on over here, let's see who we are. These are 5th graders, they're gonna graduate in the year 2020. I just want to find out who you are, what you like about school, and what you're gonna do after the year 2020. Can you tell me a little bit about that? Okay? Okay.
I'm Justin Jensen.
Justin Jensen, okay? And what do you like about school?
Um, my favorite part is math and PE.
Okay, great, math and PE, alright. The math teacher, he's a math teacher. Okay. And what do you want to do after you graduate in the year 2020? Where do you want to be?
I'm a Major League Baseball player.
Major League Baseball player, okay. Don't forget, you met him here back in 2012. Okay. What is your name, sir?
Anthony Chavez.
Anthony, and what do you like about school?
Oh, mostly the math and science.
Alright, math and science. And what do you want to do after you graduate in the year 2020?
Well, be an animator.
An animator, alright, great. Very good. And what is your name, sir?
Elias Palacio.
Elias? Okay, and what do you like about school?
I like to do social studies because I like to see what life was like before.
Alright, that's great. And what would you like to do when you get off school in the year 2020?
I want to try to be an actor.
Try to be an actor, okay. You got a good, a good start right here. Okay. And one of these things about this class of 2020 is that many of the jobs that they're going to have don't even exist right now. We can't even imagine what they are, so we have to really train them broadly so they're really prepared for the year 2020. This is a really great group. Thanks a lot, all the students from Whitman Elementary, and your teacher, Mr. Vatsek. Thank you very much. A few years ago, the class of 2020 was in the 2nd grade, some other kids, and I asked them, "What do you want to do when you grow up?" And they each raised their hand, "I want to be an astronaut, I want to be a teacher, I want to be a doctor." And I went around the room, and then one kid raised his hand again, and he said, "Can I change my mind?" So, they have plenty of time to think about it. Okay, during the last school year, we had a lot of special events that were spread across the school year, and I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize some outstanding employees and the schools all in one meeting when we're here together at the beginning of the school year. So I'm gonna call upon my fellow board members to help me with this special recognition. First, I'd like to call Board Vice President Scott Barnett to the podium to introduce the Okay, just a second. Before that, I just wanted to point out, we have a special guest here tonight, Tony Young, the president of the San Diego City Council. If you'd stand up and everybody's here. Tony has been a great supporter of our Vision 2020. I'm really glad you're here tonight, and let's go on around with Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's particular, it was great watching these elementary school kids here, kind of brought me back to my days in elementary school when I did class plays, and I remember being in the Sound of Music, and I still remember my lines, "They have escaped." Pretty good, isn't it? I can do it again. It's particularly a pleasure to be here this evening, not just because of the state of the district, but my two daughters actually are students here at University City High Go Centurions, so it's a pleasure to be here. But in fact, tonight, 11 elementary schools were designated 2012 distinguished schools by the California Department of Education. Schools selected for the Distinguished School Award demonstrate significant gains narrowing the achievement gap and exemplify the incredible commitment of teachers, administrators, and school employees to provide a world-class education to every student in spite of the financial hardships facing our state and our schools. Will the principals of these distinguished schools please join us onstage when your school is called and remain until honorary, all honorees are onstage? First of all, from Benchley Weinberger Elementary, Principal Mars Claret-Pattin. From Digman Elementary, Principal Kimmy Lockfeld. From Doyle Elementary, Principal Kimberly Moore. I think there's some Dolls down the street, so there's some Doyle parents here. Hardy Elementary, Principal Kathy Wolf. Kathy could not be here because of an event at her school. From Holmes Elementary, Principal Jonathan Saif. From Marvin Elementary, Principal E.J. Durwaya. I'm sorry, I am probably destroying these... From Kumiai Elementary, Principal Marla Montgomery. From La Jolla Elementary, Principal Donna Trippi. From Tierra Santa Elementary, Principal Mary Laurlee Olson. From Taller Elementary, Principal Peggy Lewis. And from Torrey Fines Elementary, Principal Jim Solo. Please give all these principals and staff and students a round of applause for their tremendous efforts. And please remain onstage. And now, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Richard Barrera, who also was in, I think, a class play in elementary, and he's gonna see if he remembers his lines from that.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to shake the image of Scott in the German uniform now, and some of us kind of had that to begin with. Alright, let's get back to unity. So, I'm very proud to be able to introduce, we have five schools in the district that were named for the 2011-12 Title I Academic Achievement, recognition by the State Department of Education. This is an honor that goes to Title I schools that have demonstrated success in significantly closing the achievement gap between high and low performing students. So tremendous work by these schools. And will the principals of these Title I Academic Achievement schools please join me onstage when your school is called? So we'll start with, from Angier Elementary, Principal Andrew Gergerich. I know Andrew... We've got back to school night tonight at Angier, so Andrew can't be with us. From Garfield Elementary, Principal Timothy Dale. I had the privilege of seeing the ceremony of the students at Garfield last year who were moving from being classified as English language learners to being proficient in English, and it was really one of the most moving things that I've seen, and we see that going on all throughout the district. From Hardy Elementary, we have Principal Kathy Wolf. Kathy also has an event tonight at Hardy, but we should point out that Hardy is a two-time winner, being named both a distinguished and a Title I Achievement School, so fantastic effort at Hardy. Very proud to introduce from the School of International Studies at San Diego High, Principal Carmen Garcia. And from Vista Grande Elementary, we have Principal Kathy Calgogno. Congratulations to these five schools, and thank you to the principals and the staff for your hard work in closing the achievement gap. Please remain on the stage, and we have now Kevin Beiser to come and share some show tunes with us, I think.
Show tunes is your guys' category. I'd like to share a little personal story, just, you know, for those of you that know that Tony Young used to be a teacher, and I was a teacher at the same school at the same time with Council President Tony Young. We both were teachers at the same time at O'Farrell Community Charter School many years ago. So thank you, Tony, for being here and supporting the school and the school. I'd also like to give a shout out to the Patrick Henry High School football team, which for the first time in a decade is 5-0 this year. Each year, we recognize the outstanding efforts of our teachers and classified staff with special recognition ceremonies in May. Tonight, we'd like to take this opportunity to once again honor those individuals who were named District Teacher of the Year, Classified Employee of the Year, and were the runner-ups in all these categories, as well as recognize two administrators who were honored at the Association of California School Administrators Annual Meeting. Several of the honorees are here with us tonight. When I call your name, please join us up on the stage. Brad Callahan. Brad Callahan was named AXA Region 18 Middle School Principal of the Year, Lewis Middle Ajeen Sheheed. AXA Region 18 Central Office Administrator of the Year for Human Relations and Advocacy. Patty Reed, Elementary Teacher of the Year, Limburg-Sweizer Elementary School. Joseph La Petri, Middle School Teacher of the Year. Joseph La Petri, Middle School Teacher of the Year, Marshall Middle School. Eli Vanderwer, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce it? Okay, Elling. High School Teacher of the Year, University City High School. Brenda Bailey Burks, Classified Employee of the Year, Special Education Technician at And Margaret Lathan, Classified Employee of the Year Runner-Up, Administrative Assistant for the Visual and Performing Arts Department. Other honorees who could not join us tonight include Boon Hung Komen Roth, Classified Employee of the Year Runner-Up, Parent Outreach and Engagement Department; Garth Hebler, Elementary Teacher of the Year Runner-Up from Rolando Park Elementary School; Stephen Santana, Middle School Teacher of the Year Runner-Up from Lewis Middle School; and Michael Peterson, High School Teacher of the Year Runner-Up from Sarah High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your hard work and dedication. We know it takes a team and they're all a great team. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinct honor to formally introduce Dr. John Lee Evans to deliver the State of the District address. I've had the good fortune to work closely and collaboratively with him over the last several years. John is a thoughtful, inclusive, consensus-building leader. Time and again, his actions and words have signaled practical solutions and pragmatic engagement in this most difficult and unprecedented environment for public education. His track record underscores that the student is always our first priority. John has been a member of the Board of Education since 2008. He represents Sub-District A, which includes not only University City High School and its feeder schools, as well as those in the Marimesa, Claremont, and Madison Patterns. Even before he joined the Board of Education, President Evans has been actively involved with our schools as a tireless advocate for young people. He has served as a volunteer in the classroom when his children were at Sprickles Elementary and Stanley Middle School. John was a part of the governance team at this high school at University City. In his professional life, he is a licensed clinical psychologist, working with children, adolescents, and adults. President Evans is being honored by the San Diego Psychological Association this month as the Public Servant of the Year. He devotes countless hours to making sure all students have the opportunity to succeed now and in the future. Before President Evans returns to the podium, let's watch a short video that highlights his Vision 2020. Thank you.
Well, it's really exciting to talk to them. The kids are in the fourth grade. They have a lot of enthusiasm. They're looking forward to what they're going to be doing in middle school and high school. And we were talking a lot about what they're going to do after they graduate from high school.
I want to be a veterinarian because I like to help animals. And I feel that animals are very important to me. And on TV, I see animals that people just leave them. They just leave them and their hearts are broken. So I'd like to help animals and be a veterinarian. I'm going to go there.
We want a roadmap for how we're going to be improving things over the next several years. And so the way to do that is to take a class. This particular class of 2020 was in first grade, my first day I left the school board. And we want to look and see what's going to happen as we improve the schools throughout all the years between now and the year 2020.
I think that it'll be hard to go to medical school since it costs a lot of money. And after we just get off college and we spent money to go to college, I think that we should have scholarships to college so that way we can prepare for the life after college.
I think the main thing I get from it is just their enthusiasm for learning. There wasn't a lot of, like, you know, kids said, yeah, they like more recess and so forth, but they were really excited about what they can learn, whether it was about biology or pediatrics or math skills. They were excited about learning at all.
I want to be a zoologist because I like how, like, I want to study about rocks, like how they rock, they shake, and how, and other things.
Someone said something about more recess time running several, but that would take away from some of our learning time. So that really shows that they have some enthusiasm for learning, and that's what we need to tap into.
Thank you Superintendent Koba for the introduction. That video was made last year when the class of 2020 was in the fourth grade, and it reminds us of who we're working for when we sit here and talk about Vision 2020. First of all, I want to thank all of you for being here today. We are here to celebrate and recognize the progress we're making in our schools, progress that is all due to the hard work and dedication of everyone in this room. Now, tonight is my opportunity as Board President to share with you some of my thoughts on the state of the district, which I believe is strong because we have kept our focus on our educational mission while facing unprecedented financial challenges. Tonight, I will be talking about our progress and the challenges that lie ahead. First of all, we're off to a successful start this school year. And the reason that this happened is because over the summer, we negotiated concessions with our teachers and other educators, even principals and area superintendents and the superintendent himself. We realized that we had been abandoned by the state in terms of the basic funding that we need to operate our schools successfully. And we had already made major cuts in administration, transportation, and other areas in an attempt to protect the classroom. But this year, with hundreds of millions of dollars of accumulated cuts, we were not going to have enough money to pay 1,500 of our teachers, counselors, and nurses. So rather than continuing to point fingers and blame each other, we sat down to find a local solution. It may have been the 11th hour, more like 11:59, but we did it. We did it because the adults on the district side and the adults on the union side were willing to sit down, have an honest discussion, look at the facts, and then come up with a solution. Now, there'll always be naysayers who say the deal went too far or didn't go far enough. The reality is that none of the adults in this case were the winners. The winners were the kids of San Diego. Excuse me. September 4th, 2012 could have been a very different day in the history of San Diego Unified. As you know, this was the first day of school. And if not for these concessions, we would have had students come into huge classes. Classes in the lower grades at some of our high-poverty schools would have increased by as much as 50%. And our plans to implement increased college prep and career tech offerings would have been hampered. There would have been serious shortages of counselors and nurses to serve our students. And even many of our instrumental music programs would have lost their skilled leaders. And the list goes on and on. September 4th would have been a much bigger news day. Familiar faces would have been gone. Fay Elementary, one of our schools in East San Diego, would have had only one out of their 28 teachers returning to that school. And it would have been filled with teachers who had to transfer in from other schools. This is a group of teachers who had been working very hard at that school for several years and lost, would be all the knowledge and relationships developed by the dedicated teachers who had stood by their school. I don't know if there are any teachers from Fay Elementary here tonight? Are there any here? Okay, we got one here, okay. I just want us to recognize the sacrifice that all of our teachers have made so that we could all have a personal path at Fay Elementary. There are many more examples of this across the district. So as a district and a community, we owe a debt of gratitude to our educators who have sacrificed for the benefit of our children. Central Elementary in City Heights is another example of this. One of our largest elementary schools, a high-poverty school, the majority of the kids do not have English as a first language. And there was a little, they knew that at their school, they were going to lose about half of their teachers. Half would stay and half would leave. There was a little girl at that school named Leilani. She knew about this and wondered what she could do. She knew we were in long nights of negotiations, so she baked cookies and sent them over to us. Leilani, are you here tonight? Thank you, Leilani. And the veteran teachers and the junior teachers at Central stood together and supported a compromise to keep their staff stable. I'd like the principal of Central, any teachers that are here, anybody else from Central Elementary, to please stand up. Thank you very much. As a district, we believe in our students and we believe in our teachers and our support staff. We know that San Diego can have a world-class educational system by the time our kids graduate, our fifth graders graduate in the year 2020. And we've already been going down that road for the past four years. We've kept our class sizes small for the last four years. We've rolled out technology and we've seen gains in student achievement. Over the past four years, we've seen steady growth in our student achievement. For example, in 2008, we had only 43 schools in the district with an API of 800 or higher, 800 being the state target. By 2011, it was 43 in 2008. By 2011, we had more than 100 schools in the district that were above 800 API. And that's continuing. We're going to, in 2012, it's going to be even higher. So let's give a hand for that. That's a big increase. Since 2008, we have a 27% increase in the number of students who are proficient in English language arts. And we are number one in the state for the large urban districts in English language We have 24% more students proficient in math than four years ago. And amazingly, we have 53% more students proficient in science than we had just five years ago. Now, we don't hear enough about these great successes, and we need to talk about it more. Our science teachers got together, I was on a science task force with Mr. Barrera, and we saw how they together planned hands-on experiments and so forth, got the kids really interested in science, and we see what's happened in terms of results as far as in science. Another thing we said four years ago is that we wanted our high-performance students to keep improving, and that we wanted our low-performing groups to improve even faster. Well, that is exactly what has happened. Our Asian and Caucasian students have progressed over the last four years, but our African-American and our Hispanic students have progressed at a faster rate. Other big cities in California have dropout rates of around 20%. Ours is below 6%. And part of this due to the fact that our pathway in the high school exit exam is growing up every year. And later on, I'll be talking a little bit about how we want to go beyond these basic test score measures to look at how we're doing in terms of student achievement. These results can only be attributed to the work that teachers and the students have been doing in the classroom. Our San Diego reform plan is very simple, but very powerful. First, we keep enough teachers in the classroom for important academic programs and to have a reasonable class size. And second, we get out of the way and let the teachers work together and come up with the solutions for their own schools. And then, we all hold ourselves accountable. It's amazing how well it works. Now, how did we get to where we are today? In 2008, we had our country's financial meltdown. We immediately faced mid-year cuts to our budget. And the cuts from the state kept coming. I remember the first day after I was elected, reporters in my house and saying there was that the governor has proposed a budget cut for the state in the middle of the year. It's continually happened since then. Well, our priority has always been to cut administration before the classroom. Our central office today looks a lot different than when I came in in 2008. When I first came in, the district office was packed with desks and chairs and people. It was hot, it wasn't air-conditioned, still isn't. But actually, now there's a lot more room to move around, a lot fewer people, there's a room for a few fans. It's a big change because we kept the money in the classroom. And as the economic crisis continued, we kept looking at what efficiencies we could create. Some of these were identified by our own employees. Our warehouse workers came up with hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings for our budget by finding ways to operate more efficiently. This is an example of a team working together. So as these cuts kept coming, we realized we would be in a constant state of budget crisis. And we would just be sort of patching and hobbling along, trying to keep things together to get to the next year. And we said, we really need a long-term plan. Because even as we make these short-term budget decisions, we have to have a long-term plan to base those decisions upon. So in January 2009, we began working on Vision 2020. We knew that there were pockets of success around our district, as well as pockets of failure. And we needed a way to spread the best practices across the district. So we took a different path. Now, in the past, the board tried to hire what one board member called a savior superintendent, someone who could save us from ourselves and tell us what to do. The new superintendent would come in, sometimes from out of town, sometimes not, with a great new plan based on the latest educational fad, and have the new program and throw out what's already working. But the problem's this, these urban superintendents, present company notwithstanding, tend to have the loyalty of a free agent professional athlete who head off in a couple of years to the next bigger contract. So the board believed that we needed to have a plan first and then find the right superintendent and his staff who could implement it. So we hired a San Diego superintendent and two deputy superintendents who have long San Diego experience. Superintendent Koba and Deputy Superintendent Stover both had many years of experience in our district before taking their current positions. Now, Dr. Meyer, even though she's younger than the other two, actually has more time in San Diego Unified because she started in the district as a kindergarten. Where did she go, elementary school? What school?
Benchley Weinberger.
Benchley Weinberger. Okay, so she went to Benchley Weinberger. And were you born in San Diego? Do you have a birth certificate? All right. She's from San Diego, okay. So we have three San Diego veterans. With these three San Diego veterans, we have more stability and a central office philosophy of change from the bottom up, not from the top down. So what is this plan, Vision 2020? Instead of us just joining in lockstep with all the state and federal regulations, we have dared to ask the big questions. They're very simple questions, but they're very difficult to answer. First of all, what are our goals for student achievement? What are we trying to accomplish and how are we going to measure it? And secondly, what is a quality school? So first of all, let's start with the first question. What are our goals for student achievement? We need to start with a broad and challenging curriculum that is oriented both through college prep and career, technical careers. Vision 2020 changes the way that we measure success. Our revised goals for student achievement will be much broader than the standardized state and federal test scores. Now, all parents want their children to learn the basics, but that's not enough. Our revised goals for student achievement also measure critical thinking skills and creativity. creativity, physical fitness, art, music, and other areas. As it turns out, this will be more in line with the new Common Core standards that are being adopted across the nation. Second, to reach our student achievement goals, we will focus on effective teachers in every classroom. This is the single greatest contributor to academic success after one other. The first is socioeconomic status. We don't have control over that, but we do have control over the effectiveness of our teachers. Now, we're forming professional learning communities, and these allow teachers at each grade level to take the responsibility collectively for the achievement of all the students in that grade at that school. Teachers will not be isolated in the classroom without peer and supervisor input. And we're not just going to collect data. We will constantly analyze our student achievement data to guide and improve our instruction. We will highlight the best practices in successful classrooms, and then we will spread them out and replicate them across the district. We must have high expectations of all of our students to close the achievement gap. Now, as a psychologist who deals with children and adults, I know the very real effect that expectations have on results. Look at teacher Jaime Escalante in the movie Stand and Deliver. He believed that his students were capable of achieving high levels in mathematics, and those high expectations led to results, so much so that they thought he was cheating and mounted an investigation. Nobody believed that those kids could actually achieve, but they could. This is not a budget issue. This is not, this is a no-cost belief issue. Do we really believe our students can succeed? We have our own Jaime Escalantes in this district, many of them. We have to have high expectations. And speaking of high expectations, Superintendent Koba mentioned I work with adolescents a lot. I had a high school student in my office one day, about sixteen years old, well, he was sixteen, and the week before, he had gotten his driver's license and he had totaled his family car. And so he looked at me and he said, "Well, my brain's not fully developed as a teenager. What do you expect?" Okay. We have higher expectations than that, even if your brain is still developing. So we've actually raised the standards for high school graduation. Now, some people fear that this will lead to more failure, but it will actually lead to more success. As we expect more, they will produce more. And we don't want to close the achievement gap by having the students at the highest level slow down. We are committed to regular annual progress for students at all levels. Students with disabilities, second language learners, gate students. And personally, I believe if a student could complete the academic program in eleven years, why not? And on the other hand, if it takes someone thirteen years to complete the program, why not? What we have to focus on is having our students prepared for the world whenever they finish. Graduating just for the sake of graduating isn't going to cut it anymore. It must mean something. Our students must be prepared. Third, we want to reinvent our neighborhood schools. Is the school located by the district into a community, or is the school actually a part of the community? Schools with strong ties to the neighborhood have more parental participation. And research clearly shows when there's more parental participation, there is higher student achievement. So while we strongly support school choice, we do not, we do want to reverse the trend that has led to half of our students leaving their neighborhoods. Now, it's fine to send your student to a charter school, and in San Diego, we strongly support our charter schools, and we have two people here, we're teaching at one, or maybe it was before it was a charter. We also want our students to be able to go to magnet schools if it offers a unique program that's better suited for the student. But it's not fair that many parents are forced to send their kids out of the neighborhood simply because they do not have a quality school nearby. So, in terms of focusing on neighborhoods, we've encouraged parents, teachers, and community members to form cluster councils in all of our high school feeder patterns. The San Unified School District is huge, but yet we have sixteen distinct communities within that. Now, back in 2008, we only had a few groups organized. Now, we have these cluster councils in all sixteen clusters, from La Jolla to Claremont to Crawford to Lincoln. Now, these cluster councils are similar to the town councils and planning groups that advise the city council on issues affecting the local community. Cluster councils can advise the school board on their issues, and they can promote their schools in their own community. Sometimes we hear things from them that we don't necessarily like at the board, but we need to have this dialogue back and forth, all of us working together. Another thing that these cluster councils can do is improve the whole flow of K to twelve collaboration. I remember talking to a teacher at a middle school, and she said, "The students coming from the elementary school just are not prepared for the subject I am teaching." And I looked at her, I thought, "Well, there's an elementary school a few blocks in that direction, another one a few blocks in that direction." But she had never talked to them. The schools actually talked more to the central office than they talked to the schools that were around them. So now, we have a structure for that communication. The cluster councils and the area superintendents and others are facilitating this. We're also making a major shift for the principals by asking them not only to focus on their total enrollment numbers, which are always so important, but to focus on the percentage of eligible students living in their neighborhood who are actually attending the neighborhood school. In business terms, this is called market share. And we found one school that was very small, very under-enrolled, and when we looked at the data, if all the students, the eligible students in that neighborhood were going to that school, that school would be overflowing and we would actually have to expand it. So, some parents do not send their students to the neighborhood school because it's not a quality school. Others don't send their students because they mistakenly believe that it is not a quality school. I remember one case of a woman who filed a choice application, and, and she did it too late, she was very upset, and she had to send her child to the neighborhood school, and she was amazed. She had a wonderful teacher, there was, it was a wonderful school, and she would have never known that. Sometimes these reputations take a long time to die. So what we're doing is we're asking every parent who comes to fill out a choice application to first visit their neighborhood school so that they can make an informed choice. They still have a choice, but we want them to make an informed choice. And ultimately, our strong choice program will lead to stronger neighborhood schools as we make sure that the neighborhood schools are meeting the needs of the kids in that neighborhood. And as far as neighborhoods, the school should be the shining light in the neighborhood, not just a place occupied in the daytime and barricaded up at night. It should be a center that is the hub of the neighborhood. Now, the needs in each community will be different. Some may need health clinics or social services, some may offer special activities or evening classes, there are a lot of different things. And speaking of the community, we also have community partnerships. Here in University City, a local resident, Debbie Knight, founded the Friends of Rose Canyon. Rose Canyon is right here behind the high school to protect this canyon. And in the process of that, she has obtained grants to take our local students from the elementary school, and the middle school, other schools, right down into the living laboratory of Rose Canyon, right here. Here's an example of a person in the community who doesn't have children in the schools, but cares about children, and has formed a partnership with the schools and has actually secured outside funds. Debbie Knight, would you please stand? Thank you, Debbie, and thank you for your partnership. And besides these partnerships, we have many of them, we also have thousands of individual volunteers who come right to the school site to help our kids every day. And we always need more. We can always use volunteers in our school. So the next question we're answering is what is a quality school? How do we define quality? Well, it's a school that offers a broad and challenging curriculum. It has great teaching and is integrated into the neighborhood. Now, these characteristics are embodied into our strategic process that we believe must be present to make a truly quality school. So I would really encourage you to study these, these twelve indicators for your school. So let's take a quick look at a video where some of our students are going to tell us what these twelve indicators are that, that we need to have to have a quality school. Those are some students from Bernie Elementary. Once again, these faces and voices remind us of why it's so important for us to create quality schools. So let me just give a few quick examples of, of some of these indicators, not all of them, starting off with the curriculum. We, we're beginning to implement a new A to G default curriculum in high school for the class of 2016, the kids who are freshmen this year. So they're going to be prepared for college, but they're also going to have many career technical choices. And these range from auto-technology to business to culinary arts to broadcast journalism. Another one is high expectations that the kids mentioned up there. Our teachers have high expectations for students. And this is exemplified by a former teacher of the year, Jonathan Wen, who teaches calculus at Crawford High. He has a college-style lecture hall with about seventy students and has more students wanting to get in. Another thing that, that one of the children was mentioning is the classified staff supporting student achievement. Our classified staff members play a big role in student achievement. And I, I remember one example, when my kids were at Spreckles Elementary, the, there were many different teachers and sometimes the principals changed, but there was one person in the office, the secretary, Mrs. McDougall was always there. You saw her at the school and you saw her around the community. They really contribute to the stability of the district. Right here at UC High, when, just before I got on the board, there was a situation with some layoffs, and the people that were laid off were, were called locker attendants, but these were actually a couple of people who were working throughout the school, working on the fields, working with administration, working on the facilities. It turned out, they had been at this school since it was built. Many other people had come and gone, but they were really the glue that was holding it together, and those are, are classified employees. Another of the indicators was, was high enrollment of neighborhood students. And one example of this in our district is in Mira Mesa, where the vast majority of the kids who live in Mira Mesa go right to their neighborhood school. Another one, digital literacy. San Diego is a leader, a national leader for technology in the classroom. Through Proposition S, and now through Proposition Z, we're updating our facilities and providing 21st century technology. So this year, we're in a development phase with these twelve indicators. We're asking all the schools to begin to self-assess on these indicators and to strategize on how to improve. And then next year, in 2013, 14, we're going to start to measure and publish these results so we can measure our progress in our schools towards a quality school in every neighborhood. We already know what works, we just need to spread the best practices to all of our schools and all of our classrooms. So, the three basic elements are, number one, a broad and challenging curriculum and new ways to measure achievement; two, great teaching with teacher collaboration, the use of data, and high expectations of students; and three, a focus on neighborhood schools with engaged parents and community. So, to paraphrase John F. Kennedy, "We must ask not what our schools can do for us, but what we can do for our schools." These are our schools, these are our communities. So I'd like to conclude tonight by giving everyone here a call to action. So first of all, with the board, if Mr. Biser, you come up here and join the board on the stage for the first little piece here. Okay. I'm going to start with the board members. And I'm going to ask them to please stand up. Okay, we've got the three board members here. Trustee Biser has been working recently on making sure that our principals are in the classroom and observing the teachers because he knows that this will improve instruction. Trustee Barnett has been working very thoughtfully on having good construction bond measures so that we can improve our facilities. And Trustee Barrera has kept us focused on our community-based reform. Now, if you are a board member, you have a responsibility to keep a focus on our long-term vision and make sure you communicate that effectively to the community. Do I hear it? Amen? Amen. Okay. Remain, remain standing. Now I'm going to go to the senior administrators. Who are the senior administrators? Here, right here, please stand up. And in the audience, who are the other, who work in the central office? Any area superintendents? Okay? Central office, area superintendent, senior administrators. If you are a senior administrator, you must be a facilitator and a support person, not a central office dictator. Amen? Remain standing. We're going to get everybody involved in this, so just remain standing. If you are a principal, okay, principals, please stand up. See how many principals we have here. Okay. If you're a principal. If you have a principal, you have a crucial job to support your teachers and engage parents and constantly focus on improved instruction. Everyone at all levels must be supported and be held accountable, principals, teachers, and students. Amen? Okay. So, now the teachers. Who is a teacher here? If you're a teacher, please stand up. If you are a teacher, you should collaborate regularly with your peers and professional learning communities to make sure that every student in every classroom is progressing, not just in your own classroom. Amen? Okay. Vice principals, please stand up. Oh my God, I forgot the vice principals. You have all the responsibilities that I just gave to the principals and to the teachers. And by the way, make sure that they are safe. And police officers, police officers, keeping our, their responsibility to keep our students safe. Amen? Okay. And for all of our classified employees, our classified employees, please stand up. If you are a classified employee, you must know that your job is to enhance student achievement, whether that's through nutrition, safety, or keeping an orderly school environment. And Mr. Stover? Amen? Okay. If you are a parent of a student currently in San Diego Unified, please stand up. And some of you are already standing up. A lot of our classified and, and teachers have kids in our schools. If you are a parent, you need to support your student's school and get actively involved in your school, know your teacher, and get involved in a cluster council. Amen? Now, if you are a student, Leilani? And whoever else is here? If you are a student, there we go, you have a responsibility to your job as a student and to be a responsible member of the community, making the school better as a result of your having been there. Now, yes, that means doing your homework, but it also means asking questions and making suggestions about how we can make things better. Amen? Now, if you're a business owner or a corporate leader, this is the top one percent. Any of them here? Okay. Well, you must recognize that you have a vested interest in our school system and that you need to get involved now so that your future workers are welcome. that you need to get involved now so that your future workers are well-prepared. Okay? If you are a senior citizen...[1557.54][1557.54](LAUGHTER). Okay. Actually, I'm a senior citizen of the board of these four guys.[1565.42][1565.42](LAUGHTER). Okay. If you are a senior citizen, maybe your grandchildren are far away, I don't have grandchildren, okay? But if you are a senior citizen, there are opportunities for you to be a part of our community as volunteer tutors and helpers in our schools. You have a broad range of experience that we can utilize, we really need you. Okay. If you are a city council member, okay, there we go. There are many multiple standings here, okay, parent, city council member, everything else, okay. You have a responsibility to collaborate and support our school system through joint use and other agreements. Strong schools make strong communities. Amen? Amen? Yeah! Okay. If you are a state legislator, hmm, okay, we've all mailed in the videotape. You must recognize that the voters have already said through Proposition 98 that public education should be the number-one priority of the state. I remember reading an editorial a few days ago, it was talking about, "Education is eating up, eating up a huge part of our budget." Imagine that, eating up. It is the basis of our society, we need to invest in education. We need to tell our legislators, "We have done what we can do on the local level by trimming our budget. Now we need your help at the legislature on the revenue side." Okay. Finally, amen. This will include everybody. If you're a taxpayer and a voter, either one, please stand up. All right, finally, my wife is standing.[1670.83][1670.83](APPLAUSE). And my daughter, right here. If you're a taxpayer and a voter, and even Leilani is a taxpayer, whenever she buys a video game, she has to pay sales tax. Okay. You have to be informed about the current status of education funding in California. Being number 47 in the nation is clearly not acceptable. So our board has endorsed both propositions, 30 and 38. We recommend voting yes on both measures. We need both of them to pass. If they both pass, only the one with the highest number of votes will become law. On the other hand, if they both fail, we face even greater cuts than we've already had for this year and for the years to come. We also support Proposition Z, talking to the taxpayers and the voters, to continue upgrading our facilities and our technology infrastructure. This is San Diego money that Sacramento cannot take away. So tonight, we have proven that we have schools worth investing in because of you. Thank you all very much.[1740.04][1740.04](APPLAUSE). Okay, please be seated for the benediction. So, what is the state of our district? We are a forward-moving district, but we still have a long way to go. This is a marathon, not a sprint. We will keep improving, but just imagine what it would be like if we were to get the financial support that we need. We would be able to soar to great heights. We're prepared. Yes, we're ready, and our children will soar like eagles. Thank you very much, thank you for coming, and have a nice night. Thank you.[1785.11][1785.11](APPLAUSE).